Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. If board members can take their seats, please. We're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:04. This is the May 2nd, 2024 Kailua Neighborhood Board Monthly Meeting. Welcome. We may be having additional board members join either via WebEx or in person. For those who are new to the Neighborhood Board, we do have a section on our agenda where we encourage the public to come forward and share any announcements or concerns that they have. The rules of speaking, if anyone wishing to speak remotely, that's on WebEx, please click the raise hand icon. May I have board members quiet, please? Anyone wishing to speak remotely should click the raise hand icon, recognized by the chair. Address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed three minutes, and the chat box can also be used to ask simple questions. This Neighborhood Board meeting is recorded and it is available on Olalo, Channel 49 on the third Saturday of the month at 6:00 p.m. and on the fourth Sunday of the month at 12:00 noon. You can visit honolulu.gov backslash NCO, or you can also visit facebook.com backslash Kailua Neighborhood Board for more information. We are doing many things virtually and keeping with the times, so we have meeting materials available on a drive on Google that belongs to the Kailua Neighborhood Board and is managed by our board chair, Bill Hicks. Neighborhood Board meeting recordings are typically posted the day after the meeting and can be found at a YouTube channel, which the link is included in the agenda, which is available on the Neighborhood Commission website. My name is Le'Avani Lipton. I'm the vice chair. I'm gonna be running this meeting this evening because Chair Hicks is off island. Okay, we're gonna do a roll call on board members who are present. Josiah Akau. Travis Council. Travis Council, present. Amber Granite. Bill Hicks.
Present remotely.
Bill Hicks, present. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David LaEha. David LaEha, present. Jade Lau. Jade Lau, present. Michael Lee. Michael Lee, present. Le'Avani Lipton, present. Carol Miyashiro.
Present remotely.
Carol Miyashiro, present. Keala Morell. Kate Ryder.
Present remotely.
Kate Ryder, present. Claudine Tomasa. Steve Trecker. Evan Weber. Gary Weller. Gary Weller, present. Jonathan White.
Present.
Jonathan White, present. Donna Wong. Donna Wong is here. Jeff. Donna Wong, present. Jeff Zuckernick.
Present remotely.
Jeff Zuckernick is present. Okay. We have a quorum of thirteen board members. Oh, and Steve Trecker just joined us. Thirteen, so now we have fourteen, so we have a quorum. Okay, next item on the agenda are announcements. The Kalahale Hillside Wildfire Prevention Town Hall is on Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. at a location to be announced to discuss the steps being taken to reduce the fire risk in our community. Also, I was given an announcement by the Kailua Historical Society. A hundred years of Lanikai, memories of Kaohao area. Free public presentation and panel discussion held on June 23rd, 2024 from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Lanikai District Park. The Kailua Historical Society, in coordination with the Lanikai Association, is pleased to present a panel discussion of Lanikai Kaohao memories. Featuring a talk story format and a slideshow presentation of historical photographs, this program will celebrate a hundred years of this iconic area of Kailua. The next item on the agenda are reports from HPD and HFD. So Honolulu Police Department, representative, if you could just come forward, or you're online. That Officer Atkins. Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District 4 Community Policing Team. The stats for Kailua. For April 2024, there were two motor vehicle thefts versus two the previous month. There were seven burglaries in April versus five the previous month. There were forty-eight thefts versus twenty-eight the previous month. There were eight car break-ins versus eight the previous month. And zero robberies in April versus zero the previous month. And then for last year, there were seven motor vehicle thefts last year, some more, five more last year. There were three more burglaries this year. There were eighteen more thefts this year. And there was one more car break-in last year. So stats kinda stayed sort of the same since last year. Um, I can take any questions or concerns?
Any questions from board members? Any questions from our community? Yes, sir, if you could just come forward to the microphone and introduce yourself, thank you.
Good evening, officer, my name is Leon Parker, my kid goes to Kailua Intermediate School. There's been like bands of fights that happened right after school. And the first video I saw was earlier in the year, it was in the middle of the field. Both kids were able to like walk away, so it didn't really, um, didn't really think anything of it. He sent me another one that happened last week where it evolved to where they're in the dugouts and the cages. The child did not get away, he got brutally beat. Two black eyes, broken arm. And this is like right after school. The school did send out a memo saying, but basically it was like, well, it's not on school grounds, you can't do anything. It's sad because if you stand in the parking lot and see the school and the police department, if you like look at it the right, right way. My kid spends about ten hours a day. He's at the pool swimming right now in this area. Just like wanted to bring it up at a, like a forum, kinda ask for some like security, just an authority figure in the park for maybe an hour after school because then the coaches and the parents and students are pointed, but that's all I, that's all I have.
Thank you for that. So yeah, um, that, that is a problem and it never seems to go away. We, we do try and come out when the school is about to end as much as we can, but as you're probably aware, HPD is severely shortlist staffed, so we can't always be there. We know it's a problem, so we try to get out there as much as we can. And especially if the, if the school gets any wind of it, they'll usually contact us and let us know, hey, there may be fights or something like that, and then we'll, we'll make it a point to be out there at the time. Yeah, it's, I mean, that's very unfortunate about the kid, uh, being beaten up last week, as you said. Hopefully a police report was made on that, but um, yeah, we are aware of it. And if, if people ever have any information that something like this is gonna occur, just please call 911 and let us know, and we'll try at least get one officer out there at the time. And like I said again, we, we try to, we try to show presence there as much as possible because we know it's a continuing problem.
Officer Atkins, I just have a follow-up question to that. I know it had come up in the Public Health, Public Safety Committee about retired officers often being of service and perhaps sometimes volunteering. Is this an option in this case, or does it have to be someone who's currently on staff kind of patrolling and looking out for the kid's safety?
That, that is definitely an option, that's, that's actually a great idea. We can talk to the reserves about that and see if they can try to show a little more presence over there, they can help us out with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the audience for Officer Atkins? Okay, all right, thank you so much, and thank you for the work that you do. We will now move on to the Honolulu Fire Department. I understand that there is a brush fire, so we'll understand if you get called away.
Hopefully not. Oha, Chair, then, work, neighbors. Aaron Jones, my captain here in 18 Kailua Fire Station, you all hear me? Okay, so last week there was a question on the, um, the mountain rescues, there's three of them. And the answer to that question is all three of those mountain rescues, everyone was. And to go ahead and answer the question for this week, there was one mountain rescue and everyone was. Uh, the other stats are structural fires are one. One cooking fire, seven activated alarms, no fire. Ninety-three medical fire, medical alarms. Six more people crashes. One mountain rescue, one ocean rescue. And, uh, oh yeah, no nuisance fires. Uh, the tip today about wild that fairness. While, while that fire swiftly threatened employees' landscapes, wildlife, and communities. While dry conditions and everyday activities contribute to the increased risk, it's critical to take proactive measures to prevent and mitigate wildland fires. Number one, lighten the load, reduce fuels and the possibility of ignition of your landscape by maintaining your yard, cleaning your gutters. Number two, clear, cool, and contain. Clear vegetation, ten feet around campfires and barbecues. Keep a shovel and water nearby. And put them out cold before walking away. For three, watch the spark. Ensure machinery, including chainsaws and beach trimmers and recreational vehicles operating spark restors are maintained regularly. Number four, learn more, no sorry, now learn more with these online resources. There's the HFD website, fire.honolulu.gov, Department of Public Management, honolulu.gov backslash D F. And then the last one, which is a good one, they, they put out this flyer and there's a bunch of these on the front there, but you can go online, it's a good video, a lot of resources, this site is hwm.org backslash lookout. So I did bring some again, grab some, want to know how to protect your homes from wildland fires. Any questions?
Gary Weller.
Will the fire department in Kahului be attending this wildfire meeting? You know?
It's a good question. We are aware of the meeting. I know it was just scheduled and our chief knows about it. And we have not been officially invited, we would like to attend, so we're, we're looking to that.
Okay. I'll ask that Charlie to make sure you're.
Steve Trecker.
Um, in the past, um, the last, last two or three years, uh, your department has come in and with these, uh, and reported these mountain rescues and informed us as to where it occurred, where each one, two on, you know, the bill box and wanted, or whatever, and we appreciate it in the future if you can do that so that we know how many of them involved, uh, helicopter rescues and how many, uh, took place in these places. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, the past rescue was, I don't believe that. Why don't we? There was two people airlifted out, they were, they were local residents.
I have a question on that. Do you see any trends as far as like the ocean rescues and mountain rescues, or is it just throughout the year? Is it times when it's higher than others that you've just noticed?
I don't really notice any trends. A lot of it is social media driven and people are always coming here on vacation. It's hard to know, it's also local people as well, only not any trends. I know that they are stationing somebody at their base on the Kewa Ridge Trail or otherwise known as the Box Trail. It does seem to be helping, they're making people aware of the dangers to be prepared. Maybe that's helping.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the audience, the fire department? Donald Sakamoto online, go ahead, please. Donald, you're muted, but you have your hand up. Do you have a question for the fire department?
Yeah, yeah, Chair, just a mistake, I accidentally hit the hand raise by mistake, sorry about that.
Okay, no worries. And if folks do have questions, you can also write it in the chat. Spencer can share it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is board business. We have a written committee motion in the agenda, I'll read it. The Kailua Neighborhood Board requests the prioritization of and action on traffic safety improvement measures across our community, especially in school zones for the safety of our keke. An example of an outstanding city action is from March 1st, 2012, when the Kailua Neighborhood Board strongly endorsed the city's proposal to add a traffic signal at the intersection of Kuulue Road and Alikee Street as a safe routes to schools initiative in front of Kailua Elementary School. An example of an outstanding state action is from September 4th, 2014, when the Kailua Neighborhood Board requested the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Ulupee Street and Kalanianaole Highway in front of Mauna Wili Elementary School. This is a committee motion from the Transportation and Public Works Committee. It does not require a second, but I'll ask the chair if he would like to speak a few words on this.
Thank you, Boni. Yeah, this was in response to several letters that were sent from our local elementary schools requesting various traffic safety improvements for their keke getting to school. So this is a broad brush, it's not meant to support any specific project. Obviously, those would come before the board. This is more of just a broad support for increased traffic safety. We have seen a lot of fatalities and crashes on our roadways. So the hope is that by having board support along with the letters from the schools, that it would elevate the priority of these different projects. And again, specific projects would come to the board for, for more information.
Okay, thank you, it doesn't require seconds, coming out of committee. And we've had an additional three board members join us. So is there any other board discussion on this committee motion? Go ahead, Donna.
Can you explain the motion again, please?
Certainly, yeah, so, uh, the first, there's kind of two portions of this motion that I'm, I'm, uh, explaining or going over. Basically, the first sentence is kind of the, the main portion of the motion, where it's basically just asking for the prioritization and action on these traffic safety measurements, many of them in our school zones, whether it's safe routes to school or, or other efforts, elevated crosswalks, those types of things. Again, not project specific for this, just more the broad effort to improve our traffic safety. And then the, the second part of it, our previous board motions that have passed for specific projects, which still remain, even though almost ten years for both of these still remain incomplete, that would result in traffic safety. So it's kind of a, a statement first, and then some examples of things that have come up in the past that we'd like to see actual action on. And, and it was in response to four different elementary schools, local Kailua elementary schools, asking for a specific that came before the Public Works Committee, Transportation and Public Works, basically calling on our elected officials to make improvements and prioritize the safety of, of their kids getting to school. So it's a.
So if the schools wanted a specific project, how come the motion doesn't address that? Because it's way too broad for me.
So the request with these was for a broad level of support, again, because project specific things would come to the board and we would have an opportunity. Most of the, the things in here are not specific projects, it's more like we want a safe route for our kids to go to school, or we want improved X, Y, and Z, it's not a specific project. So the, the request was for it to be broad, and if you're not, uh, for that, that's okay. But this was purposefully written to be a broad support for improvement. Again, specific projects would still come to us and we'd have an opportunity to review or, or support or not support specific projects.
Okay, thank you. May I ask a follow-up question, I think where Donna's going? So this is nuanced, but this is broad support for safety as it pertains to transportation impacts to schools, not like in general transportation, okay? So it's very specific to the schools. Okay, I'm gonna go to the two board members first, and then we'll go to the community, Chair Hicks.
I, yes, I, I just wanted to offer a reminder for ensuring that there's an opportunity for public comment as well. I know Malia Spinda would like to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, yep, she will be next after John White, go ahead, John.
Thank you, Chair. I, I've spoken on this topic in the past. And I've brought it up in a few different arenas with our elected officials about the state and the city. My proposal was, and it still will be, I would love to see speed bumps in front of every school and park, especially elementary schools, you know, these kids are still young, they're learning. We shouldn't give anyone a chance to speed in the school zones. I know the speed limit is reduced, and my proposal was to quadruple any criminal fine within a certain radius in that school zone to procure funds for this type of, uh, I would imagine it would be a CIP project. Seems like there's a seems like there's a toss-up whether it's gonna be a state or a city project. The schools are state and usually the roads are through the county. I wish somebody would just take ownership of this already, and, um, if, if we want safety to be paramount, we're talking about kids being hit by cars, so the speed needs to drop. And kids are at school all day, and when they're not at school, most of them go to the parks to either play or for some type of practice for sports. That's my dream, and I would love to see that come to fruition one day. I wish Kailua would be the, um, the start of this, let's start the spark here, and everybody will follow, I would imagine, but you know, let's take care of the kids, make sure they have a chance at success. And the speeding is, is getting a bit much, especially everybody on their phones. And now we got autonomous vehicles, who knows with the computer, if they didn't update it, it's gonna run somebody over in the crosswalk. But, um, yeah, I'm off fire, gang, let's do the right thing, and, uh,
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Malia.
Hi, Malia Spinda, actually came for residence concerns, but this popped up. And I think it was last year that Malia Peters and I, when Complete Streets first was introduced for Kailua, we went through every single page, every single frame to really dissect what was being proposed in Complete Streets. And while I respect your broad stroke, that broad stroke feeds right into some of the concerns we would have on Complete Streets and proposals therein, there, all of Complete Streets is for safety. And there are a number of proposals that are around these schools that are potentially positive, but also some problematic. And so your broad stroke feeds right into that, and, and I think if you're going to move on this, perhaps you're carving a little more specificity into the language.
Thank you.
Just, just a note again, that any specific projects would be still reviewed, this is not support for a specific project. This is also more safe routes to school focused than Complete Streets, which there's a fine line between those. And in general, I believe that the board does support traffic safety improvements in which we would be able to review and provide public comment on.
Okay, Evan Weber online.
Yeah, oha, tell me that I cannot be there in person tonight, but yeah, yeah, we can't really hear me, it looks like they're not.
Oh, we can't quite hear you, you're not clear, can you speak either directly into your phone or your headset, please?
Yeah, hold on.
Better?
Much better.
Okay, oh my, uh, yeah, um, yeah, super, obviously support the intent of this. Just similar to some of the other comments. I think, um, yeah, I would just like to know more about how, how in the neighborhood, how we intend to use this resolution to kind of engage on getting this stuff done, and whether there's an opportunity to get input from board members on kind of issues that have been taking place at different schools across the community that have come up for us.
Thank you, Evan, uh, did you want to respond to that, Travis? How this specific was, okay, Jade, go ahead. Jade Lau.
As a member of this committee, the Transportation and Public Works Committee, there was a lot of discussion. This motion was actually requested in order to give our legislators that extra oomph in especially the safe routes to schools conversation. Mainly because we have two projects that were approved. Two projects that were approved by city and county. Two projects. I don't know how many times we've been told construction is gonna start on that stoplight by McDonald's. And I'm passionate about that because my two older daughters, who have graduated from college, were in school when we passed that, and we got it approved. So really, this motion is that matchstick to light a fire under our legislators to remind them. They agreed to this, they said it was coming. There is. And it's these two projects.
Cool, super helpful context, yeah, look forward to supporting.
To save schools.
If you could mute online. Go ahead, would you like to comment on this, please?
I had a question. Where did you, uh,
Redwood. The. The. Same. So like, yeah.
Examples.
My suggestion to do is take them as a word. For a name. Wait. Right. Thank you. But if you set up quickly relating to Amazon.
Right, I absolutely am appreciative for that and I would strongly request anybody that wants to put input to these in a specific way. By all means, next Thursday is our committee meeting. Come, help us write them. Help be a part of the fervor. We highly request, encourage, beg people from our community to come and be heard in the committee meetings when these are written. So absolutely thank you and I hope to see you on Thursday.
Thank you, Jade. I think the intention behind it is that for a long time, our neighborhood board has been advocating for safety, especially around our schools, but there have also been a fatality here and there. And we have been requesting interventions to mitigate further potential accidents. And so we've been kind of beating this drum for a long time. So I think the intention behind it is just to raise that and say, and to surface this and say, look, it's already been 10 years since we've been complaining about this. So that's, that was my interpretation when I read this. We need to move on and we need to vote because we also have another.
And this will not eliminate the public process in any of those projects. The board is requesting prioritization and action on those things, which would involve public, public process. Those are examples of projects.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna intervene. Do you have specific wording for us to amend this that would still achieve the goal? And we can't, I am time conscious, so if you can come up with something, then we might be able to consider it. Otherwise, I am going to ask our board to take a vote. I don't think this is a blanket acceptance of Complete Streets. That's not how I interpreted it. If there's letters from the schools that are advocating for safety for their children crossing the street and speeding and needing traffic lights, that pertains to the schools and the letters were brought as evidence for that. So. Yes, Gary.
I think if you reworded this, that we were looking at the examples and we're trying to get the state or the city to create action on the example, it would be a good motion. Making it super broad like this could possibly bring in other issues that I'm not willing to authorize, such as a lot of the Complete Streets stuff. So that's my feeling. That if you reword this in a way that you're pushing for things that were already approved that never got done, then I can see why I would want to vote for that. Being so broad like this, I'm not quite sure if I could run the debate. Thank you.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Travis, you're the chair of this. Is this time sensitive?
It would be great to pass something tonight, but if if the board, I would request that we vote on this motion and if it does not pass, we'll take it back to committee and revise it.
Okay. I agree with that. Okay, so board members, we're gonna call for the vote. And those of you who do have concerns, I would encourage you to attend the transportation committee meeting so that we can have, yes, those members create a motion that is acceptable, really represents the viewpoints, but does not lose the substance of this, which is a public safety issue, especially as pertains to our children. It's next Thursday, May 9th at 7:45 in the other building in the community room. Okay, we're gonna call for the vote now on this committee motion as it is written. If you do not agree with it, then please come to the meeting and and it doesn't pass, please come to the meeting and help them rework it. We do want to honor the schools because they have an important viewpoint and we're here, we're elected to serve the public. Okay. All right, Josiah Akau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Josiah Akau votes yes. Travis Council. Amber Granite. Bill Hicks.
I vote yes and I request that the chair repeat the votes because online you can't hear them.
Okay, so Josiah Akau voted yes, Travis Council voted yes, Bill Hicks voted yes, Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laeja. David Laeja votes yes. Jade Lau. Jade Lau votes yes. Michael Lee. Michael Lee votes yes. Leavani Lipton. Leavani votes yes. Carol Miyashiro.
Yes.
Carol Miyashiro votes yes. Keala Morell.
Yes.
Keala Morell votes yes. Kate Ryder.
Yes.
Kate Ryder votes yes. Claudine Tomasa. Claudine Tomasa votes yes. Steve Trecker. Steve Trecker votes yes. Evan Weber.
Yes.
Evan Weber votes yes. Gary Weller. Gary Weller votes no. Jonathan White.
I with reservations, Chair.
Jonathan White votes I with reservations. Donna Wong. Donna Wong votes no. Jeff Zuckernick.
Yes.
Jeff Zuckernick votes yes. Fifteen ayes, two noes. The motion carries. Okay, we have another motion that did not make it to the printed version of the agenda. It was included in the minutes from Planning, Zoning and Environment. And I am going to ask Donna Wong, do you have the motion with you? Okay, so I'm gonna ask the Chair of the Planning, Zoning and Environment Committee to please share this motion. Procedural, excuse me. So because it's not in the printed version, but it was submitted to the Chair, we need to make a motion to have the agenda amended to add this. So would someone like to propose that motion? Gary Weller. Gary Weller's gonna move. Yes, we need a second. Seconded by Jade Lau. Okay, so this motion will, this agenda will be amended to include this motion. Okay, we have to vote on it. Okay, can I just do a hand sweep or does anyone oppose? Does anyone object to having the motion added to the agenda? Anyone online? Okay. Seeing that there are no objections, we're going to add this to the agenda for tonight. And also I do want to say that the board members were sent this, so they were aware of it. So Donna, if you would go ahead and please introduce the motion.
The motion was passed by Planning, Zoning and Environment Committee at our last meeting. And inadvertently, as things happened, it was left off the printed agenda. Bill sent out a couple of emails with the motion and then the condition. So if you go to, if you noticed on the fifth page of the agenda, there was all the conditions that the committee recommends to go with this SMA. So the motion is the Kailua Neighborhood Board approves the recommended conditions for the 1318 Mokulua Drive Special Management Area Permit as proposed by the PZNE Committee.
Thank you, Donna. This is now open for discussion. Are there any questions or discussion by board members? Anyone online? Donna, could you just explain in just a few sentences why an SMA is important and why the conditions are important that we?
So SMA covers our shoreline, which goes inland quite a ways also, but it's for the protection of our coastal zone. And so most of the ones, actually all the ones that PZNE and this board review are for homes along our Kailua coastline. And so we're looking at how close the house is going to be built to the water, given sea level rise. Should, should the home be moved back? Lights should not be, there should not be, not be any direct lighting to impact sea birds. Archaeological assessments should be absolutely conducted on every lot along Kailua Beach. Because there's just gonna run into EV and who knows what else. So those are some of the conditions that we, we put in our conditions when we respond to an SMA applicant.
And these are available on the Google Drive that is maintained by Chair Hicks on behalf of the Neighborhood Board. Is there any other discussion on this or from the community audience? Anyone online? Okay. We're gonna vote on approve, on, we're gonna vote on this motion. I'll just read it one more time. The Kailua Neighborhood Board approves the recommended conditions for the 1318 Mokulua Drive Special Management Area Permit as proposed by the PZNE Committee. We would read the conditions, but there's a number of them, so. Okay. Go for a vote then. Josiah Akau.
Yes.
Josiah Akau votes yes. Travis Council.
Yes.
Travis Council votes yes. Amber Granite. Bill Hicks.
Yes.
Bill Hicks votes yes. Kellyanne Kobayashi. David Laeja. David Laeja votes yes. Jade Lau. Jade Lau votes yes. Michael Lee. Michael Lee votes yes. Leavani Lipton. Leavani votes yes. Carol Miyashiro.
Yes.
Carol Miyashiro votes yes. Keala Morell.
Yes.
Keala Morell votes yes. Kate Ryder.
Yes.
Kate Ryder votes yes. Claudine Tomasa.
Yes.
Claudine Tomasa votes yes. Steve Trecker. Steve Trecker votes yes. Evan Weber.
Yes.
Evan Weber votes yes. Gary Weller. Gary Weller votes yes. Jonathan White.
I.
Jonathan White votes I. Donna Wong. Donna Wong votes yes. Jeff Zuckernick.
Yes.
Jeff Zuckernick votes yes. Seventeen ayes, zero noes. The motion carries. Okay, we'll proceed to the next part of the agenda, which are local agency reports, three minutes each. First up is Board of Water Supply. It's usually Danny Ornellis. Danny, are you with us online?
Hi, everyone. It's me. I'm here.
Okay, can you get close to your microphone so we can all hear you, please?
Sorry. Okay, how's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm getting over a cold. The voice is not all there tonight. Okay, so message from the board. Last month, there were three water main breaks. One on Aloha Road. This was installed in 1941. Another one on Aloha Oi Drive, also in Mauna Wili, was installed in 1963. And then a third, Aikahi Side, was installed in 1995. And the message from the board for this month, please visit boardofwatersupply.com/protectOahuWaters to learn the latest about the Board of Waters' operational actions in response to the Red Hill Crisis. To learn the latest, this will include our weekly pumping charts, recent drinking and monitor well test results, Board of Water news and updates on Red Hill, water conservation tips and rebates, and a little bit about Oahu's water history. And that's, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Danny.
Questions?
Yes, there's a question from Gary Weller.
Hi, excuse me.
Hi, has the new tank project started yet?
Could you repeat? Sorry.
The Board of Water Supply tanks that are up there by Kalahaiho High School, has that project started yet?
I, I do not, I believe not yet, no.
Okay, can you, can you follow up with a progress report on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
One more.
Okay, go ahead. Gary Weller. Or Donna Wong.
At, at the, at the site where there's going to be the new tank, there was going to be a wireless company that was going to be on the same property. Is that still moving forward?
Oh. Um, I'll find out. I believe there is one there now anyway on the tops of the existing tank. There used to be, but I'll confirm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the audience, community members or Board of Water Supply? Any online? Okay, thank you so much, Danny. We hope you feel better.
Thank you. Take care.
Okay, we have Marine Corps Base Hawaii representative, usually Major Jordan Fox, or Kristy Kalohiva.
Hi, good evening, Board, members of the community, Chair. I'm Kristy Kalohiva, Marine Corps Base Hawaii. I have a few updates. I wanted to let you folks know and also ask if we could get on the agenda for June for a presentation for an upcoming draft environmental assessment that is being conducted for the wetland area at, during Nubia Pond area. There's two locations that they're going to be focusing on and the purpose of this is to restore native habitat and to remove invasive vegetation. But we would like to be on the agenda for June for a larger presentation. I do have a map of that, but I think I'll save that for that full presentation. And they've also discovered during turtle season, two nests at the Fort Hasi area. And of course, with the environmental assessment and, and the wanting to enhance the habitat of endangered species, we're desiring to see obviously more of our turtle nesting as well as the wetland birds that have been increasing in numbers over the last several years. I also wanted to remind you that on June 8th, we have the Weed of Warrior Program that the community is available to come and participate with. And I have the phone number. I've shared it with the flyer that I've left before, but I'd like to just say it out loud if there's anybody online. So if you're interested in coming, the Environmental Department's phone number to get ahold of them is 808-285-6464. So if you're interested, please come out. We have a pretty good turnout and I'd like to give a big kudos to our environmental department. They work very hard and are very diligent and care very much about the wetland habitat that we have. And we have a very large area that reaches all the way from the Haida side to the Kone Pohai side. They work very closely with our ranger training to make sure that there is good communication and that if there's training that is going to be impacting, that it is done with the highest of care and thought. And I worked both in the ranger training department and also in this capacity, so I've seen the caring concern that is put forth to make sure that our environment is cared for. Yes, it is starting obviously 808-285-6464. And then just one more reminder, it is real time here. The expected DV date will be toward, it's a Saturday, it'll be towards the ending of July, last Saturday in July. Again, if there is anybody who's. Again, if there is anybody who's interested in attending, please email us your names, and we'll see about getting you guys on the invitation list. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Gary Weller.
Are there any plans for the 4th of July on the base?
I don't know about on the base, but I do know that for the, I know 4th of July, I just read an email that our CO and Sergeant Major should be marching in it for the Kailua Parade.
Some years you have fireworks off of the golf course, some years you've actually let the public come in. I was just wondering, because things are moving forward in terms of planning. Are they going to join the Kailua 4th of July Parade?
The CO and the Sergeant Major are going to be marching in the parade. I know there's a task for the mark or ban, but I think they may be out of the country. They have been spending quite a bit of time in the Indo-Pacific region over the last couple of months.
Thank you.
Questions from board members, anyone on this side? Okay, go ahead, Donna Wong.
Yes, my usual question, the soil sampling.
We haven't gotten the, and I say the layman report, the report that they're putting together so that us un-scientists will be able to understand it. We haven't received that yet.
Okay, and the links and the newsletter were live. So the links, they were active.
So we waited to put any?
Yeah.
So were you able to get back on? Did you try and again?
But I was reading the newsletter, the links were active.
They were.
So thank you.
David LaEha.
Thank you, will we be able to see the environmental assessment prior to the presentation in June?
Well, they're conducting the EA now, so it hasn't been started yet. But they want to do a presentation beforehand.
And I just want to remind you, if you could send, I'll let Chair Hicks know, he's off island, but if you could send him an email that you'd like to be on the agenda for June the 6th. I don't know who else will be on that agenda for a presentation, so please remind him, and we'll see if we can get you scheduled. Donna Wong.
Another question. So we only have 30 days to review an environmental assessment. So are you going to present the assessment in June? Or is it going to be ready before? Because it has to go to committee and then to the board.
I will follow up if you ask.
Yeah, I'd appreciate a timeline.
Yes. Doing the overview and then the timeline. But they wanted to be able to already talk to the Neighborhood Boards about it.
Well, they're more than welcome to come to PZ and E, it's the third Tuesday of this month.
That's at 7:00 at Kalama Beach Park, the Becter Estate. So Donna is saying this because we want to be able to weigh in, and we don't know if it's, if the EA will have already been conducted, or if it's just beginning, or what the June 6th presentation will be. But we don't want to miss the opportunity to weigh in and comment.
Yeah, I will share that information.
Okay. Any questions? Steve Trecker, and then questions from the audience if you have any.
Usually in the past with EAs, there's a draft EA that is done first, that's put out for public comment, and board comment and so forth, and then it leads to a final EA. Is that the plan here, it's going to be a draft EA first?
Correct.
So I think, you know, on behalf of the board, I would request that when the draft EA is done, that a copy of it be submitted to the board as soon as possible after it's completed. Thank you.
Any questions from community members, either online or here in person?
Chair.
Yes.
Sakamoto.
Who is that, Donald? Oh, Donald Sakamoto, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I just have a question about RIMPAC. Can you elaborate how many countries will be participating in Marine Base for Hawaii? And how long will it be, and is it going to impact the community?
How many countries are going to be participating in RIMPAC, and how long will it be?
The last email that I saw, there were 28 countries, and they should begin the first phase at the last week of June and leaving the first week of August.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Donna, then we need to move on, go ahead.
Is RIMPAC going to be at Bellows?
There will be training for RIMPAC at Bellows, and the DV day is currently being planned for Bellows.
But I thought Bellows Beach was closed because of turtle nesting.
They have marked off, and they have a plan to address that.
Okay. Hey, we love our turtles. All right, thank you very much, and we look forward.
What's DV Day?
Delegate Visitor.
Did you get that, Evan? Delegate Visitor.
Yes.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to resident and community concerns. You'll have three minutes. Please introduce yourself, and whatever your concern or your announcement, I know we have some announcements also. Thank you.
Evening, Malia Spinda. About late March, I was listening to, well, let's back it up, in recent news, we heard about landfill that YPO is no longer, the soccer field isn't longer being considered. And I just, about, I think it was late March, I was listening to, don't judge me, the Rick Amata Show, and the mayor was on, and there was question, it was as part of his time on that show. The mayor was asked about the landfill, and of which he said, an alarming comment that caught my attention, that in 10 years, Ameron would be considered. That is what the mayor said. So I would like to gather a sense of where are we as a Kailua community on that issue to safeguard? And why did the mayor say that? Right, and then I think as part of the articles that I read, the law, I know there's a landfill committee, but there was a comment that the law would need to be amended to include more sites. So y'all are getting where I'm getting at, which is, that better not be one of the sites. So what are we doing on that issue? Thank you.
Thank you for raising that very important concern. I am going to ask Gary Weller to very briefly, this issue came up, very briefly, you did some research, and there was a certain zoning term that you shared with us that meant that this site was protected, I believe, and had to be eliminated from the choices. Can you refresh us briefly in that?
The Board of Water Supply has something called the no-pass zone. And basically, if a landfill cannot be within the no-pass zone, and that means there's a potential for the landfill to, you know, hurt the water under the land. So unless the state amends that decision, they can't do Ameron right now. But as the city and county and the state gets more and more desperate, you know, that could change. So that's a real concern, and everyone in the community should be on that, because that's approximately when Ameron will be done with the opposite side of H3, all the rock they can possibly take out of there. It's about 10 years. So I can understand why the mayor may have hinted around that, but we have to be diligent on making sure that it doesn't occur. There's a state ordinance on the, no landfill can be in the no-pass zone, not close to a school. There's like seven things now that a landfill can't be on. And so the city has to adhere to that.
Malia is asking, is that a state or a city? So you're saying that's from the?
Those conditions are with the state, they passed a law. And so the Board of Water Supply now has to obey that.
So we, okay, so we need to see if there's any protections in place from the city side?
Well, the protection is Ernie with the Board of Water Supply right now, at least in the meeting that I had with them on television. But he doesn't want it in any no-pass zone. The law could change, I mean, the city's going to have to come up with some solution of where they're going to take all the garbage, because there's really no places left if you obey that state law. Thank you.
Malia, I would ask you to please stay on this, and there may need to be, there may need, I mean, this is something that we have to rally the community around for many reasons. From my perspective, sitting on, as Chair of the Kailua Water Quality Subcommittee, we have a lot of concerns about the water already being contaminated from the landfill before. So yes, please, please stay on this, and there may need to be some formal vehicle to do some community organizing. And Esther, please stay on this with us too. Okay. There is someone online, Judith Inazoo, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi, thank you, I'm Judith Inazoo, representing the Mid-Pacific Road Runners Club. I'm here to inform you about two road races in the month of July. The first is on July 14th, and it's on Kailua Beach, totally on the beach, 4.4 miles on the sand. And that starts at 6:30, we expect about 100 runners. The second race is the following Sunday on July 21st, and that's in Lani Kai, we do two loops of Lani Kai, and that's an 8K. And it starts at 6:30, and we expect, again, about 100 runners. So I'm here to inform the board and the community, and to see if any questions and concerns, and to thank everyone for their support of our running events. Any questions or concerns?
Judith, if you could just share that information in the chat box so everybody online can have it, and we also save the chat, so we'll have it for our minutes.
Thank you, I will do that, thank you.
I'm wondering, are there going to be, I mean, 100 runners on the beach? Are there going to be, like, safety stations or like anything like that? Or can we just expect 100 people running down Kailua Beach?
Actually, 100 is the most we expect, we can never really tell, but it's about the most we expect. We usually get more like 60, 70. But you never know, so we, you know, but we've had this race for more than 20, 30 years now. We've never had any problems with people bumping into each other. People just love to see actually the runners running barefoot on the sand and watching them come back in, so it's been a fun kind of thing. I will put this in chat, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary Weller.
Do you have to have a state or a city and county permit to do that, run on the beach?
Yes, we do, and one of the conditions is that we get, we inform the Neighborhood Boards and to see if there's any concerns.
Thank you.
So this is the requirement before we get that permit, thank you.
Any other questions for Judith about the Road Runners? Oh, the two dates, please. Judith, can you repeat it?
Yeah, both are Sunday, both at 6:30 in the morning. The first is July 14th, the second is July 21st.
July 14th and July 21st.
Perfect.
Okay, early in the morning.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
Okay. Anyone online? Donald, did you have a question for Judith about the running?
Yeah.
It was, I said Donald, he was online, and then I'll call Donna, go ahead.
Chair, Chair, Donald Sakamoto, a blind individual resident of the Runners side for a long time. Concerned the roundabouts that you folks build in your area. As a blind individual, it's very difficult for blind people to traverse in a roundabout. I was trained at Hau'opon, a state agency for the blind, to use perpendicular and parallel traffic. You can imagine if somebody's blind and has to traverse in a roundabout where traffic is going round and round, you listen to where to cross, so, and when I was in Washington DC, they had beacons, so. For future reference, I think you should work with the blind community when doing roundabouts with city projects or state projects, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that thoughtful suggestion, Donald, and I agree. Yes, planning for persons with disabilities or visual challenges is, it is very important. Donna Wong, did you have a question for Judith, for the prior speaker, or you have a different comment?
No, I did.
Okay.
Can somebody come from your group, or you come to our July meeting and say those dates? I'm afraid that we're so far away that people won't remember those dates.
Yes, I could come again and do it in July, but the requirement is that we do it two months before the event for the permitting process and so on, but if you put this in, I'll put it in chat, so you have the dates there in your minutes. Would that be sufficient, or do you want me to come by again?
I think yes.
Judith, it would be helpful, because the public memory is sometimes short. So we all need reminders, if you don't mind just attending, and just, you know, sharing once again as it gets closer to the event.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And then for Donald, just to follow up with you, Kelly Akasaki from the Department of Transportation Services will be here with us a little bit later, so I'm hoping she heard your comment about perhaps thinking about the needs of folks who are visually impaired in planning. Okay, any other community concerns? I know there were some folks, did you want to share, you wanted to share? Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
This is just a share. Just sharing with the board that Chats at Lake Residents Association, Elra, in conjunction with three of the canoe clubs, sending formal notification to Mayor Blangiardi requesting the removal of the exploding mangroves in our waterways. It's become a worsening problem, it was dealt with 15 years ago. Because of lack of maintenance, it's exploded again. In the past, the ALAR, Kailua, canoe clubs, and Elra have all participated in removal, but it's gotten out of hand again. So we're requesting that the mayor sign Department Facilities Management to get in and clean that up. So we're doing this in conjunction with the canoe clubs, and this is more just a share than we're doing them, so.
Thank you, and where, I just have a quick question. Where are you asking for the mangroves to be removed, which areas?
City and county departments that are on the waterways.
So that includes this far end of Kailua on Mokapu as well, that canal? Okay.
Linda James, and I'm a lake resident and working with Elra.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Any other resident or community concerns? All right, we will move on. Next item on the agenda are mayor and and reports from the mayor's representative and the governor. Uh, Mayor Rick Blangiardi, either Jim Ireland or Shane Enright. Are you online?
I am. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Director Ireland wasn't able to make it this evening. Um, tonight, the mayor is at his town hall meeting with his cabinet directors and deputies. Um, tonight's meeting is in Nana Kuli. We had two issues to follow up on. One was um suggested last month that there be a um some sort of dumpster on Kapahakori Road. Environmental Services did respond. They are um fearful that it may be vandalized or stolen. So they're looking at other solutions such as fencing off the area, putting up some type of concrete barriers. Um, no real specifics on what those barriers would look like yet and more, more signage. Those were the answers for that one. And then the other issue was the tree trimming on Ulu New, Maluniu and Kuulei Road. Uh, DPR responded and they are on a maintenance contract with those trees. And they do have them scheduled to be completed by the end of June. So in about two months or next month. And those were the two issues that I was asked to report back on, but I'm here for any questions or other concerns. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from board members for Shane? Gary Wellers raising his microphone in the air. Go ahead, Gary.
You can almost know what I'm gonna say. Kapahakori Road is now overgrown again. And what's really bad now is a lot of people are bicycling on it. And there's no bike lanes. The two lanes are very, very small. And the other day I was going to the transfer station and one of the bicycles were like ran right off the road. But it was just impossible for the two vehicles that were passing each other and the bicycle on the right-hand side of the road to have any safe place to go. So we're just waiting for somebody to either get killed there by pedestrian walking on that highway or being on the bike path. And then the fact that the vegetation is once again almost up to my neck. Uh, that makes it even more difficult to see where you could possibly pull over. They did stripe one side of the road. I guess Jim had that done. But they only did a small section and so you can't see the middle line in the road at all. And so the whole road should be restripped at a minimum. And the cleanup again. So I thank him for that, if he could possibly follow up. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions from the audience or community members online? For the mayor's rep?
Sakamoto.
Yes, Donald, you can keep it brief, so we'll continue with our agenda. Go ahead.
Okay, yes, thank you, Chair. As a longtime paratransit rider for the Handy Van as well as a advocate for 14 years, uh, my concern is about the procurement of vehicles with rear lifts uh dropped off on the roadway, cause concern um is safety on that. And then the stairway on these new vans, 14 of them coming in. The stair is very difficult for people with challenge and disability to walk up those stairs, so I highly recommend that the Department of Transportation Services uh look into more accessible vehicles that are safer than dropping off on the roadway on the lift.
Were you able to hear that, Shane? I wasn't able to get total clarity on it, but maybe online.
Yeah, I I did hear it. I didn't quite understand. Is it, are we talking about handy vans or city buses? Or I didn't hear which mode of transportation. Sorry.
It's a paratransit Handy Van. Instead of buying a cutaway with a uh side lift, they're buying vans with a rear lift to drop off on the back of the van on the roadway, which is kind of difficult for persons with disabilities. And uh safety for the operators as well as for the individual to be dropped off on the roadway if they're on the sidewalk, yeah.
I got it now. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. It's always good to have perspectives of users because it enlightens sometimes how things are done. Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Shane Enright? All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you so much, Shane.
Thank you all very much.
Oh, one, one moment. We have um, yep, we have Kalapauai Construction Update by Kelly Akasaki from the Department of Transportation Services. Hi, Kelly.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I prepared a little PowerPoint if I could share it with all of you.
Yes, go ahead.
And let me know if you can see it. Are you guys able to view my PowerPoint? Yes, okay.
Yes, we are.
Okay, so I'm here, Kelly Akasaki again uh to talk about the Roundabout Project. I did hear Mr. Sakamoto's concerns about the um additional safety measures for handicapped users. Uh, I did put my email in the chat. I don't know if he is able to see that, but Mr. Sakamok, Sakamoto, you can reach out to me. Um, either email me, it's in the chat. If you cannot uh read the chat, Chair Hicks uh has my email address or my phone number. And we can come and meet with you for any additional safety measures for the project. All of our federally aid funded projects will have the yellow tactile strips at every crosswalk entrance. So we already have that measure, but we can always look if we are missing something else. I know roundabouts are a little difficult. Um, I'm just here to give an update on the project. Right now, we are finishing Phase 4B, which is the middle driveway fronting the beach center. This should be about another three more weeks and around May 19th, we should be moving on to Phase 5. Phase 5 is our probably most difficult because this is where all the pedestrians use that corner to cross with their kayaks or just their bicycles to get into the beach park. So we do have temporary traffic controls to guide them around and use the existing facilities that we have built already. My main reason that I'm here today and I wanted to talk about some of this is when I did present before, you know, we had original dates that we were projecting. The contract end date for QIT uh was in November 2024. However, they wanted to finish a little early in the end of summer, which was about August of 2024. Right now, our current contract with change orders and additional time is going into June of 25. Uh, but they still want to finish early and their schedule is looking at finishing around February of 2025. My next slide will go over um the reasons for most of the delays. Uh, we've had 10 rainout days so far, which is about two weeks. We've had 32 working days, which is about a month and a half just on change orders. And the change orders are mostly unforeseen utilities that are in the area once we open up the roadway. So there's water lines, gas lines, drainage lines that are not in any of the plans that we've had before or in our design. And once the contractor hits them, we usually have to work with the utility companies to see how they want us to either relocate or work around them. The latest stop work that we had that most people have noticed um was DDC's emergency rockfall mitigation closer to the boat ramp. And with this one, we decided to have QIT stop work. And it was supposed to be for the whole month of April, from April 1st until May 1st. They finished or worked early and we were only short for about three weeks. So uh if you notice, last week, QIT was back um working again from the 23rd of last week. Uh, the biggest delay that we have so far is our Evi Kupuna findings. 61 total working days um that we have had to stop work, which is a state law for us until we get approvals from Shipti to start work again. So the total delays for this project is about 118 working days that we have documented, which is about six months. So I'm gonna go back to the current timeline, which kind of works out to where we are. It's about six months more than when we initially started the project. As for completed work, uh if you've been out there, you know, we've done a lot in um just getting something out there wherever we can and we didn't have to stop. So some of the pictures that I have are of the permeable pavers that we have fronting the first driveway of the beach center. And then, you know, a full sidewalk that we're gonna have on the Lani Kai side of Kailua Road. So Kailua Road will be completed after Phase 5 and then we move on to Kalahaila. Any comments or questions?
I have a, just a comment as a driver uh on my way to paddling practice. Many people are not using the yield signs and they're just driving right through. Um, which is kind of scary.
Do you know which direction in particular? Which direction in particular? Which leg?
It's, you know, coming off of Kalahaila and turning into the roundabout. There's traffic coming off of, I believe that's Kailua Road. And then the, the road that comes towards Kalapauai. Um, not the Lani Kai side, but as if you're going back on to Kalahaila. There's two different yield signs there.
Yeah.
And um, I always stop because I'm just super slow and cautious, but if I hadn't, I would have been rammed a couple of times. So I don't know how to encourage, is, the yield signs are gonna be permanent, correct?
Yes, and we have uh double yield signs in the final design. So on both sides of each yield. And then once the construction is completed, each leg approach will have a raised speed table that they have to slow down prior to the yield. So the product will be, you know, easier for them to comply with the yield and will have signage on both sides of the roadway. So it's just right now with construction and we have to put some temporary signage in the middle of the roadway. We are trying to double up those as much as we can, but we'll look into it again. Uh, the hard part is we have temporary striping on a lot of these uh Kalahaila Avenue parts. And every time it rains, you know, we get potholes, we get the striping comes off. So we have to go back out there again and restripe the temporary striping. But we can go look into that to make sure that they're a little more clear.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Gary Weller followed by Donna Wong, and then if there's any other board questions for Kelly, go ahead.
Could you send us the PDF of this PowerPoint presentation?
Sure. So this presentation has already been given to Chair uh to to Chair, uh, and I think it's already inputted into your.
It's in the Google Drive.
Thank you.
Yes.
Donna Wong.
Yes, was an archaeological impound statement conducted before any earth merving um?
Yes, so because this is federally funded, we went through the whole NEPA process. We did get approval from Shipti. There is an archaeological monitoring plan. So we do have a plan in place. We are working with the descendants who help us um whenever we do find findings. So yes, we are following all of the rules. We have found four Evi Kupuna on four separate occasions. So that's the, the majority of the delay that we have. But yes, we are following all of the plan requirements that Shipti has put in for us.
So these, so in the assess uh assessment period, is Evi were, were not discovered?
So in the areas that we are working in now, there were no previous discoveries before that they are aware of. The roadway itself, I mean, if you dig below, you know, our subbase, it's all sand. And some of these roadways probably would have been built over 100 years ago, so there's no, no documentation officially. And when they do have documentation with Shipti, it's usually like a residence if they wanna build a pool or if they're fixing their house. So the properties themselves do, but there were no previous findings in the roadway that we have record of before we started the project.
David Laeha.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, what is the budget for this construction project? And how much does these uh delays cost us as taxpayers?
I do not have the numbers offhand. The biggest significant delay right now is the Evi Kupuna findings. So we have to have an archaeological monitor on site anytime we dig in the roadway. So every day we do digging below the surface, they have an archaeological monitor there anytime we're digging. And once we find the Evi Kupuna, they take over to properly take care of of the EV and remove the EV. So they are paid based on what is found. And so far, uh, we have reached our uh allowable force account for that, and we have requested from the Federal Highways and State DOT for additional money because of the findings. I can get you an actual number and get back to you on that, but I do not have the actual um amount right now.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kelly on this? Yes, if you can just get up and use the microphone. And I'll go ahead. We have a question for you from a community member.
Sure.
This is simple. Um, what does the DDC stand for under rock mitigation?
So DDC is the Design, uh Department of Design and Construction. So they are a different department from my department, which is the Department of Transportation Services, or the acronym is DTS. So they had an emergency rockfall mitigation close to uh the boat ramp where they had to remove some of the rocks that were on the Malka side of it. So when they came in, because of the emergency work, they did a contraflow. But they would stop traffic in one lane and contraflow back and forth, which is why we stopped our construction at the same time. Cause we just thought for ease of the community congestion that we didn't want both projects going on at the same time. Because when we're working sometimes by the beach center, we're closing both lanes at some time and our detours, you know, would just compile with the, the um contraflow that DDC had. But they finished one week early and we are back working again.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Kelly. We have one more question and then we'll move on. Go ahead.
Hi, Kelly. My name is, my name is Robert Lottie. I live in the Koolae track. So um, first of all, as I see this, it looks like about a 25% increase in the timeline. Or at least what we knew is the last completion date for this project. That's uh pretty dismain to the residents that are dealing with the traffic and uh changing traffic patterns and everything that goes with it. That's my comment. My question is this. Uh, are the EV that are found in this site, are they incidental finds or are they institute burial? Do you know?
Okay, so um, there were four separate findings. Two of them were partial findings, which means only bone fragments. Uh, so at that time, whatever is dug up that day has to be sifted through by the archaeological monitor just to make sure there's no other fragments or bones that are found um that have been removed when they do the digging. There were unfortunately uh three ins, I'm sorry, institute, so full um, human remains that were found more recently. And and it's usually, it was right in front of the beach center second driveway. So that was the last uh EV that we found. Three, uh, and they were, I believe, younger children, maybe between the ages of eight and 12. So they believe it was uh quite a while ago and that they were um found in a position that is similar to ancient burials.
And just an add-on to this uh question is, are you getting pretty quick turnaround from Shipti when you go through the?
Yes, yes. So Kailua, Kailua is wonderful. Kailua has a descendant group that has been working with us from the very first finding. Makuanadi Silva, her family, Chiki Mahoy, his family. They're all part of this group that um takes care of any findings and are called right away whenever something is found. If you didn't have this group, it would go to the general public or an Oahu Burial Council, which could take months and it would go out and it go for public output of anybody who thinks they have family in the area. So we have been excellent with um your descendants and they have been helping us all the way and and guiding us on what the appropriate steps are to take care of these Evi Kupuna. and, and guiding us on what the appropriate steps are to take care of these Evi kupuna. I'm sorry, did we lose connection? Chair, are you still there?
Kelly, I can still hear you.
I can still hear you too. So I think it might just be the virtual. I don't know if we lost the actual live feed.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelly, I can hear you now. I'm on line.
Hi Donald, so before they come back on, if you want to reach out to me, you can call me on my work, uh, number. It's 808-768-8320. And I'll discuss with you on what we can do to do, to help for, um, you know, the handicap or the hearing impaired.
Okay, I, I know Roger Martin personally and John Lewis and everybody there.
Sure, so they know how to reach me too. Thank you, Donald.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill, are you on virtually still yet?
I think we lost the feed from the meeting, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I think we lost the feed. Hopefully Spencer can get them back on.
Are dealing with the traffic circle in its incomplete form and there is no sense of urgency uh, from DTS nor any of the construction. She tells us that the construction began again on April 23rd. It has not. I go by that every day, twice a day, just to follow along. Uh, thus far, I would say that the completion of this contract is shameful and embarrassing. Any person that you talk to that deals in construction, when you tell them that this takes two years to accomplish, they literally laugh in my face. And I tell them, that is the city and that is what we are paying for as taxpayers and it's an embarrassment. We should demand better from our unelected officials. And we should demand better for the money that we pay for these extraordinarily expensive contracts. This is not an isolated incident. You can take a look at the, uh, at the pedestrian bridge down in Alamoana. You can take a look at Hart. These things, they cost us. It's not just billions of dollars at one point in time for these huge mega, uh, construction projects. It's every single one of these projects that goes over budget, over time, and it wears down on us and it, and it shapes the confidence of the people and the government that we elect. We need to and must do better. And it needs to be, and it needs to start here from the grassroots because from up top above, it ain't happening. There's a reason why no one has been held accountable for anything that's happened in this state to include the line of fires. It's because we don't hold these people accountable and we should start somewhere, start here. You know, this is, this is upsetting. And I think that this, this conduct is shameful. We, we should demand and expect better. That's the only question or comment that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, uh, we thought you had frozen, but you're still here. So, um, do you want to, want to give the opportunity to respond or?
Um, all I have to say is I was out there in the field last week, Tuesday on the 23rd. And I don't know if people saw me. I was out there from about nine o'clock till about 11:30. And we were working with the contractor as they started to work again. So, I mean, I, I don't know when you were out there, um, but I, I was personally out there and I know we started again on Tuesday.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And thank you, sir, for speaking up. All right, we're going to move along. Governor Josh Green's representative, Erin Connor, are you online with us? Oh, you're here. Okay, you're here in person. And then will you be giving the update on the HPU or is that? Doc Director Kenneth, okay.
So I just had Erin Connor, um, representing Governor Josh Green tonight at the Neighborhood Board Meeting. Um, we had one question last month about safe routes to schools act 244 that was passed in 2023. Um, DOT from the transportation had responded that the advisory committee is still in the process of being built. The committee is a 21-member committee. They are appointed by various organizations, organizations. Sorry, and five of those members need Senate confirmation. I believe when I checked the status of those five confirmations, four of the five had been confirmed on this session. So there was one outstanding, I'm not sure which one. Um, and they were voted on this week at the legislature. So that's a part of the process moving forward. So once the members all get formed, then the committee will start having their meetings. While all of this is taking place, the original $10 million of funding that was awarded in that bill will not lapse. DOT has identified a number of potential projects to fund with that money throughout the state. Would that include a strategic plan for Oahu and three specific projects in the windward side off, um, Mokapo Boulevard? Two projects off Mokapo Boulevard and one on Kamamea Highway near the VCA in Kani'oehe. Those are potential projects. Those are not set in stone, but DOT won't let that $10 million lapse. That's the only update I had before I bring up Dr. Fink. And then he can provide an update to the other question about HPU and I will be here for other questions as they arrive.
Let me see if there's any questions, uh, from board members for you. Okay, Gary Weller, seems to be your night.
Sorry. Mokapo Road that goes into Kani'oe Marine Base is a state road. And the grass is up to my knees. You can't see a car turning around the different bends. Um, I'm a little familiar with this. The state transportation contracts for landscape maintenance of the highways require in the contract that the grass never gets higher than three inches. Okay, and there's penalties. But what has happened over the years is this, a contractor gets the contract. They go out there and they trim the grass oh beautifully. Cause they're a new contractor, they want to make it look really nice. Well, the state has a procedure. And if the inspector doesn't go out there to see if the grass is over three inches, nobody knows. So they only cut it once. And so they wait for a complaint. And then the contractor has 90 days to answer the complaint. Okay, so basically if you got the contract in January, you did it one time, you wouldn't necessarily have to trim that grass again for 90 or even longer. So most of these contractors end up only cutting the grass twice a year, but they're getting paid every single month to do that job and they're not doing it. And this has been going on for 40 years. A waste of all of our money. So it's about time Governor Green seems to take action on these types of things. And now's the time because we're wait, just like that man said over there, we're wasting our money. Thank you.
So Erin, if I may, this came up with, uh, a different issue. Um, but related in the sense that why can't we use technology to have a system that flags when jobs are done, when inspections need to be done? There has to be something in place or that can be easily created that just sends reminders or follow-ups, um, that can help with some of that accountability and transparency. So that would be my question to you is, is there something currently or what happens when a work order is put in? Who signs off on it? And where is the follow-up according to a timeline? So that something like this doesn't happen where the project is completed and then kind of abandoned until someone makes a complaint.
And just a point of clarification, Mokapo Road from Kalahaila to Green Corvus is actually city. And Mokapo Boulevard is state, so we can 301 at the tall grass for the city stuff.
Any other questions for the governor's rep? Erin, any questions from the audience, public, anyone online? Okay, would you like to introduce Mr. Fink, uh, sorry, Dr. Fink? Who is here to talk about DOH, I believe.
The director of the Department of Health for the state of Hawaii. And he will address your questions about the Kani'oehe HPU campus briefly.
Aloha, uh, Andy Fink, Department of Health. I'd like to actually just, um, recognize and applaud all of you. Uh, community level civic engagement and voting rates is actually associated with health status. So the more people in our community are engaged like you, it has been shown to be associated that people are better off from a health perspective. So there is a health connection to what you're doing. So I just want to thank you for that. And, um, and if I may respond to the question earlier about solid, um, municipal solid waste landfills. So it's actually under, I, I didn't memorize it, I looked it up. It's Hawaii revised statute, uh, 342H for people who want to research it. Uh, and it's actually the Department of Health that regulates it. And we do that through Hawaii Administrative Rule Title 11, Chapter 58.1. The Department of Health has to issue a permit, uh, for a county-run uh, solid municipal waste landfill. And the Department of Health oversees that. And there is a requirement, uh, that a landfill basically cannot risk, uh, the quality of water. Uh, and I think what you referred to earlier is there something called the Underground Injection Control Line, the UIC line. And if something is above the UIC line, that's means it is over a source of drinking water. Uh, and we are, we do not allow, uh, landfills over the UIC. That could be a risk to our drinking. Okay, uh, so just wanted to let folks know about that. Okay, um, regarding, uh, the, uh, property that was previously the Kualoa College Campus, um, the state is interested in acquiring that property. Uh, there may be other interested parties as well. Uh, the, uh, there, there, right, well transparency, there's funding that was appropriated in this legislative session. Uh, and I thought I would, uh, just read to you real quickly, uh, if I could find the. Okay, the funds were appropriated for the purpose to, uh, plan, design, lease, construction, management, maintenance, and land acquisition for the conversion of structures on Oahu, this is TMK, ground and site improvements, equipment and appetances for the Department of Health and the Department of Land and Natural Resources. So that's how the funding was appropriated and the use of the funding. Um, uh, I don't want to speak too much for the Department of Land and Natural Resources. Uh, but as, as to my understanding, that parcel is approximately 130 acres, which about 100 acres are conservation land. And the state has an interest, particularly the Department of Land and Natural Resources, to ensure the conservation of that land and to, uh, put it to public use, to make it available to the public. And that can be through potentially a state park. So the public can access those fields that are there, um, by trails and other access to the conservation land and providing conservation education. From the Department of Health's perspective, uh, that property was, you know, the next use was intended for healthcare. And we see public health as an extension of healthcare. So from a public health perspective, our tools are a little different. We mostly do assurance, policy, assessment, policy development and assurance. And we have physicians and public health nurses and psychologists and social workers and epidemiologists and statisticians who do that important work to protect and promote our health. So we believe that public health is upstream of healthcare. It's a population-based approach. And our intent is to help keep people healthy and let them stay healthy. We believe that that is a benefit to the state and this community, uh, to be able to utilize that site, um, to provide that benefit to improve the health of our communities. So that is our primary interest as the Department of Health, uh, to ensure that that parcel, which is an important location for the windward side, um, is used for a benefit that benefits the state and our community. So I am happy to answer any questions and also welcome suggestions uh, for how the state could utilize a property for community, additional community benefit.
Yes, I'm a proud graduate of UH Manoa MPH program. So, um, my question is, and I think this is probably in the public's mind as well, is when you say public health, like the way that the media was portraying this was that it was going to be used for offices for the Department of Health and they were going to move from town to Kani'oehe. But I'm hearing something a little bit different. So kind of what is the intention behind it? Is it going to be still like primary healthcare clinics? Is it going to be for houseless, mental health, social work? Like what is the actual focus that you all are envisioning? Uh, that's the first question. And, uh, I guess the other question that I've heard is they're going to still have to upgrade and retrofit versus upgrading the current Department of Health, which needs to be upgraded. So I guess I'm wondering, what is it? If, if you do acquire it, what will it be used for?
So I can speak to, right, the Department of Health and how I'm seeing the use of the property. Um, uh, and, uh, I look at what has been used as the academic building. Uh, and, uh, again, from a, from a, a public health perspective and also how it is in Hawaii where we're one of the very few states that have a statewide Department of Health. Usually it's the county Department of Health. Okay, um, so a lot of the work we do again is, uh, at a population-based level. Uh, this is for maybe the folks who don't have an MPH. Um, uh, uh, through policy change. So for example, as we're trying to protect Kani'oehe Bay, uh, we are overseeing the wastewater that gets discharged. We have to ensure it's being tested and monitored and corrective action is being taken. So when we look at water, health and safety and marine ecosystem and, you know, nearshore, you know, marine activities, that work needs to be overseen. And we oversee that in an office where we analyze the test results. We ensure either we're sending people out or we're ensuring samples are being collected. Uh, we need to review that and then make decisions to take the appropriate action to ensure that the water is being safe. So I, I think there's, you know, there may be confusion when we say, yes, we're working in offices, it's administrative work. But that is the public health practice. And we have experts, we have microbiologists and engineers and healthcare providers who are doing this policy level work and that is a practice of public health. Okay, so yes, um, uh, our current location, uh, that building, which is 63 years old, um, it, we have shared that it has asbestos in the ceiling and in the tile. Um, and I am looking to ensure a safe working environment for my staff. Um, and I think there's value in us staying together and being able to co-locate and collaborate. Um, and this is an opportunity for us to continue to have that synergy, uh, to be able to do what I think is our important work to benefit our community.
Thank you. Gary Weller.
Have you read the environmental assessment that Castle Hospital did on that property? And see the neighborhood board's comments?
I, I have not read the environmental assessment. Um, I do know that there are some restrictions on how that property can be used. Uh, so we are having conversations, uh, to ensure that it's current allowed use of education and healthcare, uh, that are again, our public health is on the continuum and public health is helping.
Cause I, I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee when we discussed that property. And at that time, it made a lot of sense. Castle Hospital was going to redo their whole hospital at that location and make the old location like a Kapuna Health Center. And the community really liked that idea. And so apparently Castle Hospital's unwilling to do that at this time, either for funding reasons or other reasons. But I think what we're deciding here is that, like, are you kind of like moving the department? are you kind of like moving the department headquarters of the Department of Health over there? And it would just be a bureaucracy? Or would there be benefit to the community in terms of something that's going to help our homeless people, our mentally disturbed people, and some of the issues that we have on this side of the island that that facility would help? So, and then some of the recommendations we made is that property is surrounded by some streams. And of course, knowing the water quality, um, that hospital there, uh, that location there is at the base of the mountain. So it's undetermined whether, you know, water is being sent from there into the aquifer or what, what happens there. But those, those were some of our issues back in the time when we reviewed the plan for Castle Hospital.
There's, there's, um, a lot of potential use, right? So on, 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 kind of, I don't say one extreme, but, uh, a huge part of public health is what I previously described. But because, again, we also fill the role of county public health, uh, we do a lot of healthcare services. Uh, so understanding what the community would see as a good use of that property, we are interested in. We have public health nursing on the windward side. They check on kids with special healthcare needs. They may oversee early intervention services or do outreach. So, you know, whether, you know, we bring public health nursing into there, it may happen. Vaccination clinics, uh, from a behavioral health perspective, there's opportunities to leverage that site to make more access for behavioral health services. So there's lots of opportunity, the full range of scope that we provide services. And it, it's really important that, um, you know, we, we are side by side with the community in understanding what services the community will support having next door, uh, that we are providing a benefit to the community in a way the community perceives it as a benefit.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, also add, I chair the Houseless Subcommittee. And something that's always coming up is that there are not enough beds for outreach. And so I think folks are really, really concerned about mental health and having enough services and wraparound services for folks who are houseless. And one of the challenges that we face is we have the state hospital in Kanohe, but it's a forensic hospital, so you have to have committed a crime. So one of the things that I hear is just grassroots, is like, we need more beds. We need more beds, we need more social workers, we need more outreach workers. That is something that is in the public's mind. And so they may see that opportunity with all of the dorms or that other lower portion of the campus as maybe benefiting if there's some type of outreach that can help all the folks that need help. Because it's really something that is concerning the public. I hear about it all the time.
If the community is supportive of utilizing those resources, uh, such as for behavioral health, so looking at those dorms, you know, there's, there's a lot of potential, um, for residential type care. Uh, so, uh, you know, that is something I'd, I'd be very interested, um, to explore is, uh, to what extent the public would support, uh, you know, using those facilities for those purposes.
Thank you. Councilmember Kia Aina.
Aloha, Dr. Fink. Thank you for being here and thank you for your presentation. Uh, I was able to go with several of the senators for a site visit while we were considering the, you know, the state buying it. We are aware that, uh, several, several private developers are also considering it. I know that one in particular was interested in having a, a senior home there. But the reason I just, I wanted to alert you, uh, just in case I don't get to see you, is two things. Uh, Dr. Ireland is there. Uh, and the, uh, city's Department of Emergency Medical Services, uh, is looking to have another, uh, unit somewhere to better serve the community. They were looking at Mauna Wili, and when I told him what was going on at HPU, he said that's a, a better centrally located location to be able to back up Kanohe, Kailea, and Waimea Na'ole, right? Uh, so I want to let you know that, uh, it's likely going to be in the budget for fiscal '26, um, for the construction, if you need new buildings. So the city would love to work with the state if you guys move forward on acquiring it. Uh, second, uh, the Director of the Department of Community Services was also there, uh, Dr., I mean, Anton Cruckey. So we also would like to prioritize, uh, availability of an area for, uh, homeless emergency shelters. Because they have, they have dorm rooms there already, right? So that's all. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we're here. And, um, we, and we're still going for our budget. And barely, uh, separate from E M S, uh, we could put money in for the Department of Land Management or, uh, the Department of Community Services to procure rehab, any of the building, uh, create new ones. So look forward to working with you.
Maybe folks who don't see it as much, uh, I'm, you know, very pleased the working relationship we have with the county, particularly with the E L A Research Center, Anton Cruckey. It's been a pleasure to work with him and his team. Uh, so just for folks to hear, uh, I'm very happy. I think the city and the county are, you know, we've been working very well together.
Steve Trucker.
I'm trying to be very, um, so who is the property, if the, if the state acquires the property? Who is it being acquired from? Who owns it now?
So I, I just understand it's Adventist Health Castle is currently the property owner.
Okay.
That's correct. Any other questions? Uh, go ahead, Travis.
Just a big, uh, quick clarifying question. The amount of space that you currently have downtown versus the size of the campus as far as square footage usage? Do you know, will you be able to house all of your people and then have extra space for things that council, council members talk about? Or how does it compare?
So we've not gotten the floor plans. We, we still have to make an offer. The offer has to be accepted, yeah. Um, but in, in looking ahead, we, we have approximately 400 employees, uh, currently co-located. Uh, I believe they could all fit, um, in that building. Uh, I, I really can't speak to the, the space. Um, there are, uh, a couple of unique, uh, attributes of that building that I think we could leverage. So for example, there's a theater. And I think the theater would really allow us to do more public engagement, uh, whether it's opportunities to receive public input or do community education. But that's, that's an asset that we currently don't have. And the other one is a lab, right? So there's a lab there, I guess, for chemistry biology class. Um, so we're, we're looking to see, um, how we, we're really looking at how we can encourage careers in public health. Uh, so we're trying to create pathways and even like little summer programs. Uh, so I'm, I'm hopeful, uh, that we're going to work on creating a program where, where kids will actually get experience, high school kids, and they'll go and collect samples of Kanohe Bay. And if we could have that lab, they could go hands-on, like test things in the lab. So, so it's great. This opportunity is actually stimulating us to be more creative, uh, to provide, you know, that clear public benefit.
Yes, I am personally so. I see that vision as someone who's passionate about water quality in Kailea Bay and the studies that are going on right now. We need a lot of advocates to continue that. Water quality is very important. We have a lot of issues. So, um, please, if you would, uh, just keep us in the loop and, and please return and let us know, um, we'll be following this. And, um, yeah, we look forward to, to hearing what is the best and highest use for this. Uh, I don't see, I see Donald's hand up, but are there any quick questions for Director Fink? While he's here, this is a really good opportunity. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Okay, yes.
Mrs. Akamala has a question.
Sorry, uh, someone in our audience has asked a question about the cost for this piece of property.
So I, uh, I don't, and the cost will be whatever the seller accepts. Um, but I believe I can tell you, um, that, uh, within the state budget, there's $21 million appropriated for all the due diligence, uh, the acquisition, you know, I think some of the improvements, relocation. So you would see $21 million appropriated in the budget.
Thank you. Good question. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Fink, for being here. Director Fink. Okay, we need to move on. Uh, we have several, um, reports from elected officials, and we still have a presentation. So Representative Lisa Martin, are you here? Are you online?
I'm here on her behalf.
Okay, Makie, is that you, Makieile? Yes.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay, go ahead, Makieile.
Thank you. Okay, um, very quickly, our office has been working very hard this afternoon. Uh, Rep. Martin got the Chair for Human Services earlier in January, and it has been very productive on helping on a lot of the human services issues that came across. Um, for S, uh, I want to update you on a few measures. So SB, or Senate Bill 3202, also known as the Monster House Bill, um, was amended in conference to reinsert language requiring counties to allow 280Us per lot. Although it was disappointing, and, um, she did oppose it. She was very grateful to everyone who testified and voted in. And it is much better than where it initially started. So it started with forced approval of subdivision applications for 1,200 square feet and four dwelling units per lot with no ability to place additional limitations on size or occupancy. And it now gives the counties, uh, some flexibility in where to apply the law as long as they need, they meet certain, um, benchmarks. So it's unclear how it will impact Kailea and Waimea Na'ole. For Senate Bill 2919, this gives counties the right to make their own rules around short-term rentals as they see fit. And this is crucial for Oahu since the language in the state statutes were the reason the city and County of Honolulu had lost a court case to the vacation rental industry. Um, Honolulu increased the definition for STRs from 30 days to 90 days. But with those existing 30-day businesses, um, won the case to keep operating. For an investor in our district, one month is enough cash flow to make it worthwhile to do a STR instead of a long-term or to leave that property to be purchased by a resident. House Bill 2404 is a historical tax cut bill that would reduce income taxes paid at all tax brackets and will save taxpayers more than $5 billion over the next five years. This is in addition to refundable earned income tax credits passed in the last two years for low-wage earners. It will prevent working families from getting pushed into higher tax brackets as minimum wage increases. Rep. Martin had got drafted for the second successful, um, treatment of Lani Kai with, um, homes participating for the LFA. Uh, we do have a major funding package for biosecurity, um, about $19 million to restock D O W for biosecurity, and, um, hopefully she won't have to do it herself alone every six weeks. Um, there was also an update for the Lani Kai preparedness, and also you mentioned it here, um, for concerns about people getting trapped, um, with fires due to corner winds coming into the area. And I know that people are taking action to become a firewise community, working with the fire department on that. And our final update would be for the Kailea High School Athletic Field. There's been a lot of concern, um, for the baseball field first. The field funding has lapsed, but it was included back in this year's budget with the CIPs. Funds are starting for the long process, for the athletic field to drain under the football field, for the drainage, excuse me, under the football field. And then separately, the lights project is funded and underway. So the temporary lights will hopefully be going up net for next school year. And then the permanent solution will be installed for the following year. So that's 2025. And that's LB here for any questions.
Hey, any questions? All right, Makieile, I don't see any questions, and I don't see anyone online. So thank you for that quick and thorough report. Hope you have a, a rest after the legislative season. Okay. Representative Natalia Hussey-Birdet.
Aloha, everybody. Thanks so much for allowing the continued, uh, virtual participation. I'm stuck here sitting on our last final bills because, uh, our last day of session is tomorrow. So just real quick to go over some of, like, the most exciting bills, I think, passed this session. Um, we had a bunch of bills to grant the county's authority to phase out short-term rentals. SB 2919 actually passed. Um, this is that controversial zoning bill that Makieile just talked about, so I won't get into details on that one. Uh, but it was like a really off, two parts of that were really problematic. They removed the worst part about the minimum lot size component, but they kept the ADU. So we are looking at increased density, uh, for all counties. Um, and this is the major tax reform bill she mentioned. Uh, so this is an example of what it's going to look like for a median income family who's making $88,000 a year. So last year's tax year, uh, you would have had to pay five, about $5,000 in taxes. Um, it's a phased-in approach, so next year you'd be looking at about a $350 tax reduction. The year after that, $1.5,000 tax reduction. And then over, um, up until 2031, um, your new tax liability would be about $1,500, whereas before, for the same income, you were paying $5,000. So it is a significant savings for working families. Um, this was an interesting bill, though, because it, in addition to the major working families tax cut, it also, uh, gave big tax cuts to people making over $200,000. And, um, so I actually voted with reservations on this bill. Because if I had written this bill, I probably would have ended the tax cuts around here somewhere, around $100,000. Um, it looks progressive when you do it by percentages of how much, uh, people will be saving in percentages. But if you look at the actual dollar amounts, this graph is actually the opposite. So who's saving the most dollars every year is the people in the highest tax brackets. And this is going to come at a huge cost to the state. So future legislators are going to have to look to find ways to fill that $5 billion hole in the budget. So we'll be looking at, hopefully, progressive, uh, revenue sources for the next few years. Getting creative on those. Uh, I look forward to working on this in future years. And a couple bills that I'm really excited about, we had an invasive species, basically omnibus bill HB 2619. It gave the Department of Agriculture a huge, almost $20 million for invasive species control, including 44 new full-time positions. This is huge. If they can actually fill those positions, uh, that is going to make such a big difference with little fire ants, koki frogs, coconut rhinoceros beetles, all the worst, uh, you know, invasive species. And an important aspect of this bill is that it shifts the funding to the general fund, whereas before, it, most of this was funded by special funds, which is like a less reliable funding source. This puts it as a priority in our general fund budget and frees up some of the special funds for, uh, special projects. Um, and also, I'm really looking forward to the detailed reporting that it's going to require the DOA to put up on a website. So it's going to have maps of, you know, where the outbreaks have been found, where they're doing treatments, how often they're doing treatments. So we'll really be able to, uh, get a real nice transparent look at what actions they're taking to control invasive species in our neighborhoods. And interestingly, it, uh, also appropriates $50,000 to each county for feral chicken control. Um, we have a really exciting new labeling law, too, actually. Coffee, um, any geographic origin brand coffee, so like Kona coffee, Kaua coffee, Kawai coffee, Maui coffee, by 2027 will have to be 51% from that geographic origin. It used to be 10%, um, 51% is a majority. And, um, I mean, I would prefer 100%, like we have for like Dom Perignon and Parmesan cheese and stuff. But this is a big step forward. We've been working on this for 30 years. I mean, not me, but the state has been working on this for 30 years. And similar bill passed about Maci, state. And they look, uh, did I get disconnected?
Yeah, so it says you stopped sharing, but, um, you are a bit over time. Is that your last slide?
Two more slides. Uh, they have to have a disclaimer if they're not actually grown in the state. And we pass a statewide fire marshal bill. Um, the fire marshal would be appointed by the fire council. They get one admin position. I wish they had 10 for enforcement of our statewide fire code. And this is the town hall that, uh, you guys mentioned earlier. We do have a location. It's going to be at Kaliha'ao High School, which is an extra cost. I'm going to be paying for it out of my office budget because I think it's worth it. That school is at risk if we have a wildfire on that hillside. So please join us Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 PM. Um, and I did invite HPD. They're sending, uh, Tom Inoy, Captain Tom Inoy. But I'll make sure they also send somebody from Ikahe Fire, uh, Department as well. That's all.
Thank you, Natalia. Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on, Senator Jared Keahoke Lole.
Chair, members of the board, members of the Kailea community, aloha. Both representatives really went fast. Both representatives really went fast and detailed into some of the really important measures that we worked on this year. Happy to discuss any more of them in detail. Very excited about the vacation rental bill. I introduced the bill and waited nine years for the opportunity to try and get it done. So it's very, very nice to be at this point. The governor will sign it tomorrow. The Maui mayor announced today that he's already drafted legislation to take action on it. So yeah, we're hoping to see some positive results on that. The labeling laws were big. The tax cut is, is the most significant tax cut in state history. So that one I'm very happy about. We also passed a tax credit on, a tax exemption on doctors for services for Medicaid, Medicare and TRICARE, which are for low-income residents. It's a really, really important bill for rural communities that have significant access issues because of the lack of doctors. It's $76 million a year to, of foregone tax revenue for primary care, you know, country doctors, family doctors, pediatricians, people to provide healthcare access on the neighbor islands. So yeah, big deal. Invasive species was good. It looks like the Maui budget situation is stable for now. In the long term, especially into the summer and the fall, it's going to be very important to make sure that all of the families that are still in non-congregate settings, which are the hotels, are transitioned out. There's been a lot of movement on the housing project front on Maui. The sooner we can get everybody transitioned out of the hotels, the sooner we're going to stop spending all of that money housing them, that we're going to have to fight with FEMA for the next three or four years for reimbursements on. So that's important. And then we spoke last month at length about, I believe, insurance, but also HICO. If you've been following the news, ultimately, we decided not to move forward on the bill to provide funding for HICO out of a rate pair fee that would basically be established on the front of your bill for the next 30 years. We're hoping to work on that in the interim. I can talk a lot about that and about anything else, so I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Questions for Senator Keahokealole first from board members and then we'll go to Malia. Any questions, board members? Okay, go ahead Travis.
So perhaps after session, I'd love to work with you on Rokapu Boulevard. I know you brought this up at a previous meeting, but getting some traffic safety improvements there. I've been working with HD. There was a fatality there last year of a decorated marine riding a bike. I'd like to find some solutions in that area. So potentially after, when you get a little bit of rest, I'd love to connect with you on some improvements over there. Okay, great.
Malia. No, because it's on O'Lelo and we want to have it for everyone's benefit, so they can hear you when you're on the mic. But CIPs, what's CIPs? And Kailua, look forward to between you and Senator Lee?
Uh, yeah, the big one that I tried to hold on to was the re-allocation of the money for Kailua High School, which is a $10 million allocation that we structured for the entire athletic complex. The football field replacement funds and the baseball field replacement funds were lapsed during that controversy at the beginning of the session because of the uncertainty about Maui. That was quite frustrating. We also found out at the very end from the DOE that the money to replace the baseball field violated Title IX because there needed to be an equivalent female sports project that was done at the same time, which is quite frustrating because the softball field at Kailua High School is brand new. So we lost the baseball field because the softball field was finished earlier. So we're going to have to figure out an equivalent project, probably lockers to work out. And then I believe Makieile from Representative Martin's office talked about the football field. There's a drainage issue underneath that needs to be solved before we put a new field in, but the field gets double duty because Kalahele and Kailua, JV and varsity play. So that's four football games every Friday, Saturday of football season. It's a mess thereafter. The, the lights are going to get fixed, but it's going to be, it's going to require another allocation after they're done with the site work and that drainage prep. So it's probably going to be a sort of, it's going to be like probably a $20 million project from beginning to end. So we are able to keep it going and rolling. Senator Lee kept the money that was allocated last year for the library. And then I think also for Kailua intermediate, if, if he's on, he'll share in greater detail. We lost a couple of projects in Kailua and Ikahe and Kalahele we're going to have to come back for next year. So that's the, yeah, those are the capital ones that I, I'm very happy that we were able to keep the Kailua money because of the Maui situation. So thank you for that question.
David, very quickly, we need to move on. We have presentation and another motion. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. The 20 million for the invasive species, can you share with us just a little bit about what the specific actions are going to be taken relative to that spending?
Sure, it's, it's actually much higher than 20 million. I think it's closer to 30. And the reason is, as pointed out in, I believe Natalia's PowerPoint, 46 Department of Ag inspectors were running off of a special fund that's generated from the state's cargo fee. Essentially what we did was we took those 46 individuals and we funded their salaries permanently through the state general fund, which opened up the cargo fee for rapid response, which is going to be used directly for little fire ant response. It's for buying pesticide, it's for equipment, it's for survey materials and staff. So that's, I believe, at least $4 million is going to be directly allocated to rapid response for projects on the windward side, but also throughout Oahu, but definitely for the windward side. And you can, you can thank Representative Kitagawa actually from Kaniohi for that, for that piece of it. The $20 million is going to be dispersed amongst the myriad of different invasive species issues that need direct action. The primary ones are going to be little fire ant research and development for pesticides. The big problem with little fire ant is that you need a special pesticide in order to kill the queen. You can kill workers with Raid. You can't kill the queen unless you have these specialized treatments. If you went to the town hall, then they explained it. And the big box pesticide companies, they don't sell them in Hawaii because we don't have the ag scale for them to run their entire product line. And so they just don't feature them in Home Depot or City Mill in Hawaii. We have to special order it in and it's expensive and cumbersome and they don't even want to do it. So it, we're, we're going to need some research and development to figure out how to either utilize off-label applications or some other alternative. Coconut rhinoceros beetle is really hard. They don't have best management practices for how to eradicate yet, so the money's going to go to figuring that out. Two-line spittle bug, coffee berry border beetle, we have some grasses, devil weed. There are a number of things, but also a risk assessment that needs to be done statewide to determine exactly sort of what share of the risk is presented by just incursions from the ports, you know, pallets, imports of live propagated material, plants, how much of it is, is a function of the nursery industry that we've talked about for a long time. We had an informational briefing this morning with the Department of Ag and we found out that actually what's also happening is because nurseries export to the continent, many of them are certified and are in compliance, the ones that fall out of compliance go into landscaping. And so if you read the news tonight, a Kailua nursery was named as the, as the nursery or as the entity that donated the infested plants to the Punahou Carnival. So we're having an issue now where they convert from, from nursery business into landscaping. And then that's even worse because you're not getting it in potted plants, you're getting it in sod that they are planting in people's yards. So that's what a lot of that money is going to go toward. We're, I'm going to spend a lot of time this summer making sure that they allocate it appropriately. If you guys want to get involved, then just let me know. We're going to keep them busy. I'll stop there.
Mahalo. I was just about to stop you on that note. Okay, thank you so much, Jared. Okay, Senator Chris Lee.
Hey, thanks, everybody. You know, the, the downside to going after everybody else is they take all the good stuff to talk about. But I'll just add to it, highlight a few of the bills that I introduced that made it through. First up is SB 3242, which basically says anytime the state or the county starts to repave a road, they gotta go in and make the safety improvements, particularly for areas where there's, you know, a lot of fatalities, a lot of injuries, that sort of thing. And the other piece of it is that it allows the counties and the state to just unilaterally lower speed limits near schools. And that's really important for a number of reasons, because obviously that's where a lot of the conflict is and where a lot of kids are getting hit. And what do you want to thank Councilmember Kiaaina for reaching out about that one? So that's on the way to the governor's desk now. Separately, a bill that we passed last year created a $20 million fund for safe routes to schools to basically fund projects in key areas where the community and the schools need help. And it's a first-come, first-served sort of process that's going to kick off this summer. So I was listening earlier to the, the motion you guys made about requesting help for specific roads or areas that are dangerous. So that'll be helpful because it's, you know, money that either comes to our community or goes to others. And we'd like to be able to help address some of those issues as quickly as we can. Senate Bill 2963 basically makes it felony and increases penalties for those committing charitable fraud. We saw a little bit of this during the state of emergency during the Lahaina disaster. And Senate Bill 2575 kind of flew under the radar, but it, it bans unpermitted undersea mining in state waters, actually just bans it outright within state waters, which has been a huge deal. California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska, other US states have already done this in order to protect their near-shore ecosystems and fisheries and everything else. So we join those folks in protecting our near-shore marine waters. And then finally, to Malia's point on CIP, I'll just add in, yeah, Kailua Elementary School put in, I think about $6 million for that school, in particular to address the ingress and egress out of the school and the old sidewalks and everything that, you know, are like 30 years beyond needing to be redone, as well as their parking areas and things like that. We were able to protect the $3 million that's for the library. And then the biggest thing was the $21 million for HPU. I mean, that was a CIP that we, we collectively worked on. And that was really important because, you know, this could go sideways if the wrong person buys that property. And we want to make sure that, you know, growing up here on our side, this is sort of the heart of the windward side and we want to keep it for community use and keep it in a way that, you know, jives with all the values and green stuff and everything else that we've been fighting for. In the same vein as, you know, the bill we passed last year to permanently protect and preserve the ka'evi coast, as well as the $7 million we put in last year to buy the thousand or so acres around Manawili and preserve that in perpetuity. So this is just that next step in trying to make sure that those things we value here in the windward side, the community has control over and it's for public purpose and we don't end up having to battle, you know, a developer who wants to do something completely different with it that the community would not approve. So with that, just happy to answer any questions and, and thanks again.
Okay. Chris, in the interest of time, we're going to hold questions and move on, but I know that Steve Trecker had something he wanted to say. So Steve, are you okay with emailing Chris? Yes, okay, he's all right. He will email you. Thank you. Councilmember Esther Kiaaina.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. Chris, thank you so much for SB 3242. I'll endeavor to follow up with all of the schools in our district to work with the city to see how we can lower all of the speed limits. And also thank you to Senator Keahokealole for giving us the authority to address the short-term rental issue. If, if you're not aware, we had a hearing yesterday on Bill 52, CD1, which the board supported last fall. And this would be to increase penalties to deter developers from constructing monster homes. Current law is, it penalizes someone from $250 to $2,000 per day. Under this measure, if the initial fine would be $25,000 and $10,000 per day. The next hearing is on May 15th and I'll come back to zoning again. And I'm able to use the board's resolution for advocacy purposes, which I did for zoning. So thank you. With regard to e-bikes, as was mentioned in the last Neighborhood Board, there was interest. And so just wanted to find out what kind of authority we had because very often it has to be delegated by the state. So we are able to regulate the operation of bikes, including e-bikes pursuant to the authority granted to us. And so we are able to enact regulation by ordinance. Three options I'm looking at, and if anyone has any, not all, please send it to me, but I'm leaning towards the first one, which is to consider prohibiting the operation of e-bikes in city parks and rights-of-way. The second option would be prohibiting e-bikes on city streets and roadways. And the, the third option would be regulating the speed of the bikes, which as you know, really is not going to do much because part of the problem is it's not being deterred. And if you're aware of what happened in Epa, the school has taken it upon itself to ban e-bikes at their school. And I think that's it. You know, it's been a long night and I just wanted to put a last push for our, our summer fund program. It can only be as successful for our youth who are going to be impacted if we do not have staff. So if anybody knows college-age students or someone who is in their senior year, we need all of the staff staffing necessary because it's going to impact the number of students that we can, we can serve. And Lori has put it in the chat box. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Esther. Folks, we have 25 minutes left. And so if folks have any burning questions, please email Esther. Thank you for that quick report. We're going to move on to Representative Scott Marayoshi. Scott, are you here? Not online? Okay. Nicole Gray on behalf of US Representative Jill Tokuda. Okay. Her report is in the Google Drive, I am being told. Reports from members who attended other meetings, any Neighborhood Board members attend meetings they'd like to share about. Go ahead, Mr. Weller. Need to speak into the mic.
I don't think you, we're aware that July 4th is a Thursday, the first Thursday in, in July. So if, I think we have to take a full board vote on changing the date of the board meeting.
Yeah, so our neighborhood assistant is checking that, but we still have one month to go where we could put that forth.
Just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you for that good reminder. Okay. Next, we have a presentation on 111 Kailua Na'lupe renovation draft SMA by Dalton Boprez, project manager for Wilson Okamoto Corp. And you have 10 minutes allocated for this, but if you'd like to be brief and thorough, that would be appreciated.
My cock though, thank the board members for allowing me to be. Again, my name is Dalton Boprez, project manager at Wilson Okamoto Corporation. Also have Desiree Melbitt running the slideshow online. So yeah, I'm trying to keep it brief. We're here for single-family home renovation taking place at Wanukai in Kailua, or bonded Beachside Residence Project. Slide, there. So we'll just provide a brief review of the project site, project description, brief outline of the special management area permit process and what the SMA assesses. Slide. So again, we're here to discuss the Beachside Residence Project situated here at Wanukai. I do want to leave on the northern shore of Kailua Bay. Next slide. Next slide. The project site can be further identified by text map key PERSOL 1438308. It's a roughly rectangular plot, approximately three-fourths of an acre or 31,220 square feet on the shoreline. Since the property is on the shoreline, it's within the city and county of Okamoto Special Management Area, where it will be called the SMA. So the project site is currently occupied by a two-story, almost 5,000 square foot single-family home originally constructed in 1969. It's undergone a course of renovation and improvements throughout the decades. It also features a large pool, sand volleyball court on the Kai side of the property. The project is, or project site itself is relatively flat, 790 above mean sea level and sweeps downwards from Mount Kai. Situated within the state land use urban district, the city and county of Okamoto Residential are ten district, or designated designation, so it's compliant with some of the related Next slide. So the proposed project just entails decommissioning an existing building at the back of the house and relocating it to the front of the house where the current circular driveway is. This episode about where the remaining area of the front of the house will be converted to landscaping and she'll construct her family gathering area. There is an existing mother-in-law suite on the southwest corner of the house. We're going to demolish that and replace it with a two-car garage that's slightly bigger, about 500 square feet bigger. And then there's going to be other minor innovations on the exterior of the house and the rest of the renovations kept interior. They're also going to raise the roof of the main structure of the house from 20 feet to 25. Next slide. So this is our diagram, digramatic X on site plan showing the renovations. So the orange main structure part of the project is where they're going to raise roofs. The purple parts will remain. And the pool is on the backside of the house where they're just landscaping on the site plan and they're going to move it to the front of the house. The red part of the house, they're going to demolish the mother-in-law suite and build a two-car garage, bunch of old one exist to want to have a drive. Next slide. This is just architectural draw-in. We just wanted to show this, but it's pretty hard to see, just to show that the house is outside the shoreline, set that, and all the improvements are going to be outside the shoreline, set back. So this is just a brief overview of the SMA permit process. We met with DPP, we prepared a permit application, we have our technical studies ongoing and right now we're at step number three, give the presentation to the neighborhood board, after which we will complete our SMA application submitted to DPP where they will review it, area directors, where we've been about 90 days from when they accept the application. That will go to city council, directors required, where we'll have to present, then city council will render a decision on the SMA permit. Next slide. This is just to give further context. So when we first started the project, right after Chapter 25 revised ordinances upon the change, because the cost of developments was above $500,000, or you had to undergo environmental assessment, but the rules changed to allow single-family homes to go straight to SMA. So we did send out early consultation packages. DPP said we didn't need to do environmental assessment, whether it's early consultation package based in front of the neighborhood. So all of those comments will be incorporated in our SMA application assessment. Next slide. This slide just gives a brief overview of what the SMA puts into and assesses. It's primarily focused on the coastal resources. So we'll address all these things and currently anticipation is no significant impacts from the project as it's just more or less minor initiatives to an existence sealed back. That's it. Any questions?
Gary Weller.
Hi. I don't know if you're aware, but we've made kind of a new policy here. So when your application is ready to be submitted to the city and it's complete, we would like you to come to the planning and zoning meeting and show us that and not use this as your qualification for the SMA, because we will vote in the committee on your SMA and then in the next following meeting, that motion will be approved, as there was one tonight. So we reviewed that SMA and then we, we created a motion to approve that motion, that motion in that meeting, in that SMA tonight, for the one that we already saw at our last planning and zoning meeting.
Yeah, I've been coordinating with Chair Bill.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll be in 20 seconds.
Yes, it is the third Tuesday, so it's the 21st of May. Yeah, over at Kalama, Kalama Beach Park. Wonderful, so glad you all attend that. That's where we do a deeper dive and we have a lot of expertise and so folks can ask questions and concerns and all of that and direct it specifically to you. So thank you. Any other questions from the audience, from other board members, anyone online? Okay. Seeing that there are none, thank you so much for being here, for sitting through the entire meeting to do the presentation. Okay, our next item is a piece of board business. This is an individual motion. Someone will need to make the motion and it will require a second. Who would like to introduce this? I believe Gary was going to introduce this. Okay, Mike Lee would like to introduce this. Will you please read the motion and then it will require a second?
The Kailua Neighborhood Board will apply to march in the 75th Annual Kailua Fourth of July Parade. Request the Neighborhood Board Commission fund the $125 application fee, nonprofit community category.
This motion will require a second. Is there someone who will second this? Steve Trecker, seconded by Steve Trecker. Is there any discussion on this motion? Anyone online would like to speak to it? Okay. Are there any objections to this motion? I will say that for historical purposes, last year Chair Hicks had proposed that there was a certain amount of folks who volunteer to represent the board. So I don't know if we need to tackle that or is to encourage board member participation? Do you remember? Does anyone remember that? No? Okay. Oh, yes, we're talking about the parade.
Yeah, we had a lot of people help us out on the board on the parade. I'm going to attempt to get the same truck that we had last year to use in the parade and then some of the board members marched in front of the truck with a big banner and other of us waved to the people. So I guess as it gets closer, we'll format, who wants to volunteer to do that?
Yes, we do, as we are elected by this community, I would strongly encourage people, if we do pass this motion tonight, to join us. It is fun, it's in our hometown, and we need to show up and really represent. So, okay, let's just, can we take a hand vote? Okay, and we still have a quorum. Any objections to this motion before we just go to a hand vote? Online? No? Okay, people shaking their heads. All right, so we're going to now vote and I'm going to ask all those in favor, I'll just read the motion real quick. Kailua Neighborhood Board will apply to march in the 75th Annual Kailua Fourth of July Parade. We request that the Neighborhood Commission Office fund the $125 application fee in the nonprofit community category. All those in favor, please raise your hand. You're not in favor? Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So there's seven present and four online. Okay. So the motion will carry. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for staying till the very end of our meeting. The next item is approval of minutes, Thursday, April 4th, the regular meeting minutes. Are there any improvements or anyone object to approving the minutes? Okay, seeing no objections, we approve the minutes. Committee reports, anyone want to report back on their committee report?
Chair, I just have a verbal addition to my committee report for the next agenda. This was something Bill Hicks recommended I do during this section, that I'm adding a bullet point to our upcoming transportation and public works around supporting the Aikahi Elementary School Energy Resiliency Project. So we'll add that as a discussion point at our upcoming transportation committee.
That is noted. Okay, we have three hands online. Did you have any questions? I see Carol Miyashiro has one. Yes, go ahead, Carol.
Okay, I also need to amend my May PSPHCD meeting agenda to include adding a discussion of an upcoming wildfire safety preparedness fair in Aikahi on June 23rd. So the K&amp;B has been asked to participate and assist with the planning and I'd like to add that to my upcoming agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and please do share that with Chair Hicks and Spencer.
Yes, we'll do, thank you.
Okay. Any changes to committee memberships? Right? Anyone else online? Any other board members online that had something? Put their hands down. Okay. All right. The chair's report, committee agendas for June 2024 are due to the chair, Chair Hicks, by Sunday, May 26th, 2024. And this meeting is adjourned at 9:46 PM.